Good evening. Would you like to call this regular meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please?
Yeah, I think we do.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertani?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here.
Thank you.
And the invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Alfred Ledoux. Pastor, if you'd come forward, please. Thank you. And thank you very much for being with us again this evening.
With those willing, let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day you've blessed us with. Thank you for just giving another chance at life. And Lord, I pray for this council. Thank you for bringing this team together. And Lord, I pray for your strength and your wisdom to be over us. And Lord, I pray that you just give us a sound mind. And I just pray for agreement. I pray for unity. Pray for transparency in this meeting. And Lord, let everything be done before your glory and for your honor and to help people and to help those outside this wall. So we thank you for bringing this together. Thank you for our governing members. And Lord, I pray that you give them the strength and wisdom to make the tough decisions in this city. Thank you for our city of Fairfield. And Lord, I pray for all of our people, all of our schools, all of our hospitals, and all of our service members who are out there serving this city. So we thank you. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Boy, would you lead us into pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Also, I'd like to make a quick motion, Mr. City Manager, to have public comments go after the presentations tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. And we apologize, this was an error on our part as we put the agenda together, so...
And Mr. Mayor, if I might? Oh, I'm sorry, do we vote?
Go ahead.
I'm going to also ask that we place the update on homeless services organizational structure at the end of presentation, presentations, anticipating a robust discussion about that. I think it's as a courtesy to our other presenters to let them go first.
Have two motions. Are there seconds for both of them? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Yes, motions, both motions carried unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Appreciate it. I just wanted to touch briefly about, you know, the state of the schools in Solano County right now. I do, I do some work for Toro University in Brandon, so I, I visit different classrooms around. And I really got to take my hat off to the teachers that are really struggling right now, you know, with COVID. The amount of, I know my son's a teacher up in Indercombe in Sacramento, and he's, he's seen it himself up there. You know, it's hard to find subs. It's, it's just a tough, it's a tough time to be in education. And, you know, even though I'm retired, I'm still involved, and I'm usually at a school every day somewhere in Solano County. So I want to take my hats off to the teachers and the par educators and the administrators. And in Fairfield, too, the administrators at the district office are actually going in the sub right now, which is, you know, they're not doing it anywhere else that I know of, at least in Solano County. So I have to give it to the district people that are one day a week are going in there and subbing pretty much all day. So, you know, say a prayer for our teachers out there and, of course, our students. So, okay. That is my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening and thanks for watching from home. Appreciate seeing the chamber looking full. It's, it's, it's good when the chamber is full. I first want to say congratulations to Pastor Anthony Gilmore and First Lady Isaleen Gilmore and the Bethel Community Church family. They're celebrating their 12th anniversary of pastoring at Bethel Community Church on East Haber. They do a great job. Pastor Gilmore is a tireless servant, as each of us up here would testify to. So we had a great celebration on last Sunday, and I just want to thank Pastor, First Lady, the entire Bethel family for all that they do, from backpack giveaways to feeding programs to vaccination clinics, to advising us when we call him, working with Chief Cantrell and the police department, all that they do. Much appreciated, and please keep up the great work because we need it in the community. So thank you, Bethel. And I also want to thank Mayor Price for issuing a proclamation celebrating their 12th anniversary. I kept the proclamation a secret, and so they adore the mayor like all of us do. So when I showed up with a proclamation from Mayor Price himself, they were extremely excited and very thankful for that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kelly and Stefan and everybody who worked on making a really beautiful presentation for Bethel. And the last thing I want to say is that I want to thank our state Senator Bill Dodd. I'm sure others will thank him as well, but he really stepped up to the plate in the California Legislature and spearheaded the effort to get the reciprocal licenser legislation passed so that our spouses of our heroes at Travis Air Force Base can work, for God's sake, in their professions and have reciprocity, and they're able to support their families, which they should be able to do. So Senator Dodd, it took a lot of courage and acumen and know-how, so thank you very much for that. The last thing, I told you that was the last thing, but I just thought of something else. Sorry. We have our next Fairfield Clergy Action Network meeting on this coming Tuesday. What is the date of this coming Tuesday?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yes. Three o'clock here in council chambers. So all you senior pastors out there, if you're within the earshot of my voice, show up. We're doing great work. We're going to be doing some programming with Travis Air Force Base, some very important work to help our troops get acclimated to coming back home from where they've been assigned. So much more to come on that. And, Mr. Mayor, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Bertani and Mayor. Thank you for your work on getting things around to AB 107 and for carrying that. It was so important. I did call Senator Dodd today and thanked him because this is a big deal. I am not very happy with one thing, and that is that it doesn't go effective until July 1st, 2023. So I'm not sure why that is because he and I didn't get to speak about it, but maybe, maybe Councilwoman Bertani will get on him and ask him about that so we can maybe move it along a little faster.
Consider it done.
Yeah, thank you. You did a good job. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about was just a few days ago in the Daily Republic over here, there is a story about the number of homeless children and foster children in Solano County. And they say that they know of about 1,400 homeless children, another 300 foster care. Now, you know, I worked in this over at Heather House, which doesn't exist anymore, but I worked with the county and with all the schools because the laws are that they have to take care of these homeless children. And the problem is, is that we, all of us, society, look and say, oh, we've got to fix the homeless people that we see on the streets. And we do. But what we do forget are the things that we should put first, and that is our children. Children live on the streets, too. I've had them live in cars. I've had, lived them under cars. I've had them, there was a star, this kind of breaks my heart, a star runner at one of our high schools, and she tried so hard to make sure that nobody knew that she was homeless. And that she and her mom were living in a car, and I got some help from some local people and were able to help with that. But, you know, for her to be as healthy as she was, it was unbelievable. But we're not doing enough. And so I would just like to ask that, you know, everything that we're looking at this way is all geared toward taking care of the people who are on the street and causing problems for themselves and others. But again, these children, it's just, it's really, it's, it's a scourge on us. And so I'm just asking that my colleagues, when we do look at this, that we actually focus on not just a couple, you know, oh, we've got three homeless people staying at this shelter, three homeless children. There are a lot more, and the schools are the ones that'll tell you, the county school. So I hope that we'll work with them and, and do something specifically for these children. Fairfield, for a long time, had the only shelter for women and children in Solano County. We don't have that anymore. But we can't forget them, and that's what I had to say. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I, I think it's going to be a common theme probably tonight. I had the good fortune this morning, I met with Bishop William, Bishop William Harris from Praise Covenant Church, and they've been here about two years and located on West Texas Street. And the reason I met with them is they want to volunteer, they want to help, they want to feed, they, they want to become involved, and they're also looking at building housing, housing for people that desperately need housing. And in the same vein as what we've talked about, I want to give a shout out and kudos to Solano County because I understand that they've started their mental health facility, the groundbreaking, which is sorely needed. And a lot of times, these fly under the radar, but it's coming. And then the last thing, I had the good fortune now, I've talked to this young lady twice, Indea Johnson. And Dia Johnson, she has started yellowheartcommittee.org, and it's a nonprofit that offers mental health services not only to termed-out foster children, but our homeless, houseless kids. Again, and mental health is all part of the issue because all you do is graduate, especially when they come out of foster care, a lot of times, if they have, they don't have the services provided, we're just graduating our next class of homeless people. So you can see that in the same vein, we all go to meetings, we go to a ton of different meetings, but these are the meetings that stick out. So I want to welcome Bishop William Harris and his church. He's going to become involved, and I said you're going to rue the day that you said, hey, I want to help because the phone calls will start. But it's also, it's very heartwarming to know that we get so wrapped up, I think, in the minutia of being on the city council, and it's just problem after problem after problem, and it's a breath of fresh air when somebody says, hey, I want to help you with your problem. They don't want anything. They don't want money, they don't want recognition, they just want to help. So those are the people that I give the big shout out today. So to Ms. Johnson and Pastor Harris and others that are in the same vein and with the same ideas, I just want to say thank you. Mayor, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, you had a comment, please? No, no comment. Your report, please. Scott Tonison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember?
Yes, this weekend, I joined in a mulch for Shelter Solano. They, they literally took all of the mulch out of the playground, 25 yards of it, and they replaced it with 75 yards of mulch. There was probably 20 to 25 people out there. Just want to give a shout out to the Fairfield Community Services Foundation, the Cities' Quality of Life Task Force, Shelter Solano, Travis Air Force Base, Fairfield-Susun Unified School District, and the Matt Garcia Foundation. They, the, it was taken out, it was fast. When we started out, we started at nine o'clock, and there was like eight or 10 people there. And by 9:15, 9:20, there was like 25 people in this playground, and it, it went fast. So it was, it was fun to see everybody come together. And then I also wanted to give a shout out to the fire department. You guys had a, had an open house a couple weeks ago, and there, there was big crowds. It was just, apparently it's usually at all the fire stations, but this one was held at 37, and it was, it was full of kids. There was great participation, so I just thought you guys did a great job, just wanted to give a shout out. That's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So this weekend, as many of you know, we have the general plan going on for the city of Fairfield, and this weekend there was a community workshop held at the library, the Civic Center Library. And so I attended that, and it was a very, it was great to see so many people attending. And I just wanted to thank everyone who came out and gave their input because we do currently have three land use alternatives that have been drafted. And so if anyone in the community watching was not able to attend, there is a survey that is going on, and it is open until, I want to say, October 25th. And it is located on fairfieldforward.com. So we are really needing everyone's input. It's really important that we hear it from everybody. There is, again, three alternatives that are drafted, so we would like and would want to hear from the community to see where they want us to go with that. Also, I just want to invite everyone to, on the 30th of October, so next Saturday, there is a Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, event happening also down the street over at the community center. It's free and open to the public, and it is from 11 to 3:00. And so this is an exciting event for me because it is part of my culture. We, we celebrate the dead in a celebratory way, and so it's a beautiful event. If you come, you'll get to learn all about why the day is celebrated and participate in some of the really fun activities and, that are going to be happening. And you might catch me reading a book in Spanish and English. So come out and join us for a little bit. It'll be a good, it'll be a good day to be with community. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I should like to report that I received this email yesterday, and it comes from a fellow in San Francisco, and he said, I just read the story about your police officers and the catalytic converter thieves arrest. Congratulations. Great job. Well done. Makes me want to live in Fairfield, too. And also should like to report that I did participate in the groundbreaking ceremonies for the mental health facilities off Beck Avenue. And those facilities will have 32 beds, a much-needed component to solving some of our homeless problems. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I don't have anything else to provide at this time. The weeklies have come out, and we're going to talk a little bit about the homeless organization here in a few minutes, so I'll reserve it for that.
And Mr. City Attorney, we met in closed session, and there is no reportable action. Is that correct?
There's no reportable action out of the closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Fairfield High School's Junior ROTC. They adopted a section of East Atlantic Avenue under, yay, under the direction of Major Frank Argon. And then also, I want to thank the Schrader and Winningham families. They adopted a portion of Lopes Road. And in fact, Anna, you had some input on which road they should adopt, so thank you for that. Also, I just want to comment that my daughter's getting married in three days, so I want to wish, I think sometimes she'll see these videos, maybe once I'm not on this earth anymore, so congratulations, Chelsea and Luke, and we're looking forward to having you as our son-in-law. Thank you.
And if you would, please, Madam Clerk, the process for public comments, please.
Yes. Thank you. Persons wishing to address?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, real quick, I think we've moved public comment till after presentation.
Oh, after presentation, okay.
You're right.
Sorry. I got all excited.
So we'll go to presentations now, and our first presentation will be an update on homeless services organizational structure. Mr. City Manager?
I think we're going to do fire prevention and the others first, and then we'll jump to the rest.
So if we go to item number two, Fire Prevention Bureau Updates, please.
Good evening, everyone. Fire Marshal Stephen Conti. Tonight is just a quick, brief overview against Mayor Price, council members, and all staff and everyone watching. This is a quick update on your efforts and accomplishments of your fire prevention team. Currently, and last week, as Councilmember Tonison spoke about, Fire Prevention Week, last, well, last week, October 7th, a couple weeks ago, excuse me, was a great success. Thank you for all that attended, participated, and we were certainly happy to see everyone out and hope everyone had as great a time as we did. We truly enjoyed it, so thank you. Also, every year, the National Fire Protection Association has a theme, and this year's theme was the sounds of fire safety. So it's a great reminder to make sure for everyone in your homes, make sure your smoke alarms, batteries are checked, your exits, you can get out of your home, and if you have any questions, always feel free to call us anytime for anything. Also, some inspection highlights. Your Prevention Bureau, excuse me, has completed approximately current-to-date 1,900 fire and life safety inspections in our community, and our mandated California State Fire Marshal 1205 inspections. Those are mandated apartment units, three units and greater, public and private schools, and our hotels and motels. So the team's been at it, it's been a great effort, and we're continuing to move forward and make our city a little bit safer every day. Next, we'd like to, our staff updates. I'd like to welcome our newest member... I'd like to welcome our newest member, started on October 8th of this year. He comes from City of Stockton Fire, our new fire inspector, Victor Daniel. Victor brings a wealth of knowledge, experience, and it's just going to make our team, as I always say, another rock star to our team. So, great, great to have you, Victor. Our ongoing community risk assessments, which we're continuing to always look day in and day out, how to make our community safer, look at any fire and life safety hazards. That's an ongoing daily commitment from ourselves. Ongoing community risk reduction, continuing our efforts day in and day out. That's a nice picture of our Inspector Trent with our new weed abatement sign. That's a reminder. That's our municipal code reminder to all individuals that need to maintain their parcels. And we'll be showing that probably next year. It'll be out in the field. Our weed abatement, near and dear to our heart, everyone's biggest concern. We've, with our partners, Public Works, our Inselmo, our number-one weed abatement contractor, we've been able to help orchestrate, as a team, over 700 acres in our department. This is a picture of Dixon Hill, just to show you the excellent job that there were some citizens worried about their homes. And Inselmo abated that whole hill down to four inches of grass in the fire. Any danger has been removed completely. It also gives us dynamite access. So that's been something we've really kept an eye on. Again, I have to give a hand to the team, Public Works, and all stakeholders that were involved in that. It's been a great job and continue to make our community safer day in and day out. In closing, we just want to say again, the Fire Prevention Bureau would like to say thank you to all our community stakeholders, everyone in the audience, council members, staff, for your continued support and appreciate the time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent report. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, when he says dynamite access, he means great access, not actual dynamite access.
I was going to have that agendized, actually. So I'm glad you made that clarification.
Just a little pressure.
Stephen, that was a real blast. Thank you.
Okay. And our next presentation is the Breast Cancer Awareness.
Our next presentation, please.
Sorry. I'll wait till it settles down a little. Sorry. Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation and Poem by poet laureate Bonnie D. Michelle. And Councilmember Moy will read the proclamation.
Okay, this is a proclamation from Mayor Harry Price's office. It's for National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October. Whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the city of Fairfield stands with the courageous women and men who have been diagnosed with breast cancer and honors those who have lost their lives to this terrible disease. And whereas breast cancer is 100 times more common in women than men, and 1 in 8 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer over their lifetime. An estimated 281,550 women will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in the United States this year. Whereas doctors estimate that about 5% to 10% of breast cancers are hereditary. And individuals whose family history puts them at increased risk for breast cancer should discuss proper prevention and early diagnosis strategies with their doctor or qualified health professional. And whereas 63% of breast cancer cases are diagnosed at a local stage. And the five-year survival rate for a breast cancer patient has greatly increased. And today, it's 99% survival rate. That's fabulous. That's a lot of work. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves to increase awareness of breast cancer and to encourage individuals to have a plan to detect breast cancer in its early stages. And whereas, it is vital that those affected by breast cancer have access to quality, affordable health care. And research of all forms of breast cancer needs to continue to be vigorously supported. Now therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And this is our poet laureate. And she's going to come up. And she has a poem, I believe. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Price, city council members. I'm honored to be here to read my poem, to help bring breast cancer awareness to the forefront during October. My husband, John, is with me tonight. He was diagnosed with breast cancer in 2012. It was an emotional time in our lives. The important thing about him being here is that we want everyone to understand that breast cancer is not just an illness that strikes women. Men need to be vigilant as well. When I was asked to read a poem, I actually Googled, which I don't usually do, poems that were related to breast cancer. I found many amazing poems. So I'm hoping that you take the time to do the same as I did. You will find them to be quite heartfelt. Sometime in all of our lives, we will have a friend, family member, or loved one who is touched by breast cancer. On the day that I was asked to read a poem, I had been informed that very morning that a friend of mine had passed away from breast cancer and lymphoma. I decided to write a poem to honor her and her heroic battle with breast cancer. She lived in Solano County her entire life. She was a resident of Fairfield for over 30 years. She was my neighbor and my friend. I thought that a poem about a citizen from our community who passed away in 2021 would be most appropriate for this evening. The last time I spoke with my friend was during a weekend outing to Costco. Needless to say, it was not the best of situations to hear such disturbing news. I vividly remember the last time I spoke with her. My poem's entitled Vivid Pink Sweater. Early this morning, a friend told me you were gone. I'd seen you rather recently. You looked happy. You seemed so strong. Your style, always impeccable. Jet black pants, bright white blouse, vivid pink sweater. You said you had cancer. You were awaiting test results, but you were feeling much better. You were never one to propel people toward miscommunication. But you would rather share your wit with a giggle to lighten any situation. There must have been a direness that your mask hid from your face. Your speech was soft and quite unclear. With earnest intent, I listened. Your muffled words were hard to hear. I failed to grasp the enormity of your fear. Walking to your own rhythm, sometimes amongst turmoil, more often infused with glory. All your many experiences could fill pages upon pages with your life story. Today, the autumn breezes threw leaves dancing across crystal-blue skies. I watched and pondered, searching for the words to simply say goodbye. In the midst of struggle, I pray that you did find innate strength and peace, and accepting discernment that would cause your pain to cease. You fiercely loved your family. You were the purveyor of your life, stalwart in ideals and oftentimes in strife. Though you lost this final battle, I remember your inner fire, tenacious in spirit, a force to inspire.
Bonnie, thank you very much. Thank you very much. That was beautifully written. And many of us have someone who has head cancer. So thank you. We turn now to the convening of the Housing Authority.
Oh, we have, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We have the Fairfield-Narasaki Sister City 50th Anniversary Proclamation. And Councilmember Panduro will read the proclamation.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And Arletta Courtrite will be the receiver of the proclamation.
I just want to say thank you for that beautiful poem. It touched me. Thank you. Okay, so we are here to honor the 50th anniversary of the Fairfield-Narasaki Sister City on today, October 20th, 2021. And I will be presenting it to Sister City Chairperson, Ms. Arletta Courtrite. Whereas on October 28th, 1971, Mayor Loyal Hanson of the city of Fairfield and Mayor Konami Yokouchi of Narasaki, Japan, signed a formal agreement in Fairfield, California to establish a sister-city relationship. And whereas Narasaki is located in Yamanashi Prefecture, which is famous for grapes, peaches, wine, textiles, jewelry, and is most notably the location of Mount Fiji. Narasaki is about 90 miles from Tokyo. And whereas, in summer 2022, the city of Fairfield will celebrate the 33rd year of the Fairfield-Narasaki Sister City Student Exchange Program. Students from Fairfield travel to Narasaki each summer and spend three weeks in Japan, where students live with Japanese families, participate in school and community activities, and travel to important historical sites, including the Hiroshima International Peace Memorial. And whereas, in December of each year, students from Narasaki visit Fairfield to experience the U.S. holiday season. They also stay three weeks with host families, visit Monterey, San Francisco, Sacramento, and other Northern California locations. Visiting local schools and meeting American students is one of the highlights of their stay. And whereas, every five years, adult delegations from each city visit the other city. A Narasaki delegation traveled to Fairfield in May 2016. The Fairfield delegation visited Narasaki in October 2016. The next adults, the next adult visits would have been in 2021, but have been postponed due to the COVID pandemic. And whereas, the Sister City Committee is composed of community volunteers who recruit students, organize fundraising, and plan the December student visit. And whereas, student and adult exchanges between the two countries have led to lifelong friendships, employment, educational opportunities, and even weddings. And now therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2021, as the Fairfield-Narasaki Sister City 50th Anniversary and encourage the community to celebrate this momentous occasion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this honor. It's been an interesting two years for the Sister City program. October 28th is the actual anniversary date. And I just happened, as I was reorganizing things in my office the other day, to come across the official proclamation from the city of Narasaki dated October 28th, 1971. So that's a nice treasure for us to have and to have rediscovered. Our visits have been canceled for last year. And this year, we had selected a group of wonderful students from our local high schools to go to Narasaki in the summer of 2020. And they were selected in February of 2020. And a month later, just about, found out that they would not be going to Japan and hoped to go this year. And of course, found out they would not be going to Japan. And the two adult visits that would have taken place this year were also postponed. So we're hoping that everything will be back to normal next year. But we're just going to hold our breath and find out what happens. We are having a virtual visit with officials from the city of Narasaki on the 1st of November at 6:00 p.m. And I would like to invite any members of the city council who would like to participate in that to please think about doing so. It would be great to have you as part of that meeting. And I also want to thank, I don't know if we have any former volunteers or current volunteers in the audience tonight, but it's been a long line of dedicated volunteers that have kept this program going for 50 years. And I just really want to thank everyone who ever had anything to do with the program. I know, you see John Takayuchi over there. He drove the city van one time with the group going back to the airport when they visited in December. So I just want to thank everybody who's ever had a part in this to make it happen and make it thrive over these 50 years. Thank you so much.
Arletta, thank you and your husband, Gene.
Yes, and I would just like to say that on November 2nd, we actually will be officially recognizing Arletta, not just for her volunteerism with the Sister City program, but also as the retired city clerk. Her volunteer work with SerOptimus, she was the president twice, with the Girl Scouts, United Methodist Women, the list goes on. So I hope all of you can come on November 2nd at the council meeting, where we'll be recognizing her officially. Thank you.
Thank you. And we turn now to our next presentation. That's an update on homeless services organizational structure, please. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes here to talk about the future direction, I think, of homeless services and how we continue to move forward, as we've been doing, to tackle this huge challenge that we have in this city as well as across the country. The council had requested an update on some of our thoughts. The last time we presented, I think, was about a month ago. And we've received a lot of very good constructive feedback, both from the council and from members of the community, about some of the thoughts that we've had and the potential plans as we structure and move forward. So this presentation, we want to do a couple of things. First, there was a question asked, why? Why restructure? Why consider moving homeless services into, whether it's into the Housing Department or somewhere else? And so I want to begin with just answering some of those questions, providing some information on that. I don't want to spend a lot of time, though, talking about the potential of homeless services being part of the Housing Department, because I think we've discussed that. And I think there's opportunity here to talk about other possibilities as well. So after I touch on that very briefly, we will, Chief Cantrell will come up and she'll talk about another possibility. And again, none of the things that we're going to talk about are decisions that we've made. These are part of the discussions that we've had internally, part of the ideas that have floated around. And we want to introduce those ideas to the council. And then after Chief Cantrell presents some ideas to you relative to homelessness and the law enforcement team, I'll come back and present an additional idea. And then we want to open it up for any discussion, questions, or any other things that may come up as we go through this. And so this is really just to kind of elicit maybe some feedback and some thoughts from the council and from others. So as far as the why, it's easiest for me maybe to talk a little bit about the structure of the city staff and the organization that you've asked me to lead. We divide the structure, obviously, under the city manager's office. We have various departments. Each one of those departments has a specific focus, whether it's police, or fire, or finance, or community and economic development, housing, et cetera. And their specific focus, that's sort of their specialty, their staff to handle the issues that they're tasked with. And it all relates to that particular area. The city manager's office is not a department. It's not established. The City Manager's Office is not a department. It's not established or set up like a department. The City Manager's Office's role is to provide oversight to all of the departments, to provide leadership to those departments, to ensure that those departments are cohesive, that they work together, that we maintain the synergy that's, that's going on, and to ensure that those departments respond to the directions, the requests, the, the needs as expressed by the City Council, because we work for you. We do have, under the City Manager's Office, some functions, and those functions oftentimes are sometimes special projects might come through the City Manager's Office, communications, marketing, some of those things may fall under the City Manager's Office. Homeless Services, for example, falls under the City Manager's Office. It's one of those functions that oftentimes you put it there, sometimes to kickstart the program, get it going, and then take a look at a more permanent location later on. Now, it doesn't always go that way. Sometimes it can remain there. But, but oftentimes, at least under the management style that I have and the way that we've organized, it's, it's more apt to be a location for special projects, projects that have a term, or those things that might more closely relate to things such as legislative issues, the lobbying that goes, that goes on. Those types of things oftentimes fall under a City Manager's Office. So as we took a look at homeless services, one of the things that we felt was we've made a lot of great progress over the years. Long before I came on board, there were some exciting opportunities and things that were created, your HART and your HIT team, for example, which have done some great things, and they've continued to become more and more productive, continue to do some wonderful things and grow in their, out in their reach, to the point to where you've authorized some additional HART team members to, to beef up and, and increase our ability to go out and clean up homeless camps and reach out in that way. You've also funded, authorized the funding for additional outreach coordinators in homeless services. So the homeless services division, as it now sits, you've authorized that division to grow and, and to have more resources available to it. And so these are all positive things, and we've made some great ground, I think. But as we've taken a look at where we are today and where we need to go in the coming years, we felt that focusing homeless services within a department now, fitting it within a department where it will get more attention, where it will have a, a department head now that is focused on that particular area, whether it's in housing services or somewhere else or a new department, will help this continue to move forward and grow. It's limited, we believe, if it remains in the City Manager's Office, the focus. One of the reasons is, is my role as a City Manager is to focus on the, again, the way that each department functions together, to channel that, to provide executive-level leadership of those things, to, to ensure that there's synergy, again, across all departments. It's, it's the function of a, of a chief executive officer. Stepping down from that role to focus on any particular project takes away from my ability to lead the entire team. I, I then become more in, in the weeds, if you will, on specific areas. And that's not health, healthy, I think, for the entire organization. I think you, you see a lack or a, some, some neglect that starts to happen there on the executive side. And there's lots of studies that will talk about that, the mistakes that a CEO makes. Some of the number one mistakes is micromanagement and failure to delegate, and we can talk about that a lot later on. So why housing services? Why did we look at that? There's a relationship between housing services and, and affordable housing and homelessness. If we take a look at a lot of the state agencies and the federal agencies that we work with, for example, in the state of California, there are about a half dozen agencies or departments in the state of California that have their own programs towards homeless services. Of those, the largest is the Department of Housing and Community Development. About 80% of all the money that we get through grants or that is funded from the state to the communities comes through that department, the Department of Housing and Community Development. Our Housing Services Department already has a very close relationship with the State Department of, of Housing and Community Development, dealing with the, the grant programs and the other things that are doing. So we see some synergy that's already there that we can continue to, to, to work with and develop through housing services. If you take a look at the federal government, for example, HUD is, is another program that we have a very close relationship with, and that's a federal program that Housing Services has a relationship with. Other programs through the state, Home Key, that comes through the Department of Housing and Community Development. No Place Like Home is another one, the Emergency Solution Grants Program, again, through the Department of Housing and Community Development. So these are some of the reasons why we felt like this is a good fit. It's not a unique model to us. Many cities throughout the state of California place homeless services under or with their housing department. Pasadena, for example, that's where it's located. San, Santa Rosa, that's where it's located. San Bernardino, that's where it's located. There are many, many others. These are just a few off that, that I've been able to pull. And so it's a, it's a, a model that works. Now, that said, our goal is to ensure that we find a model that works for this community. We know that what we've been doing has worked, and you've seen some great progress. Our homeless services division is a great team, and they've done some wonderful things. We've got some terrific partners out there. We want that to continue to happen. In fact, we want that to continue to grow. One of the things that we recognize, and if you're a student of Jim Collins or any of his Good to Great writings, one of the things that he says, the very first line in his book in Chapter 1 says, "Good is the enemy of great." We recognize that. That means that, yes, we're doing great things right now, but we believe that there's still a lot of room there. And I, I think you all agree, there's a lot of room to continue to grow that and do even better things and better things. So we're trying to find ways to get there. And that means sometimes tweaking the organization a little bit. That means sometimes taking a look at some of the programs or some of the structures or how we do things and finding new ways to do it, maybe more efficient, more effective ways to do it. How can we better utilize the resources that we have to get more done? So that's our goal. How we get there, I think this is something we'll have some wonderful discussions on. So the next thing I want to talk about is, and give Chief Cantrell a few minutes, she's going to present some ideas that we've kicked around. And again, I want to reiterate, these are simply ideas. You might hate them, you might love them, you might not care one or the other. They're ideas to solicit some discussion, and, and we've not made any decision here. We're not looking for decisions to be made tonight. We're, we're just simply looking to have some more discussion. So Chief, if you want to present a few things here, and then I'll come back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you about a very important topic, as evidenced by your discussion at the very beginning of our meeting. I think your passion and your compassion for our homeless population, for our children and our homeless population, and for our business leaders in our community is evident. And so I'm going to, I'm going to share with you just, as City Manager Stephen Chatwin said, one option of many that you have, and I'll explain to you why, why I, I think it's good to have homeless services under one, under one roof. So, so currently, the way that house, or homeless services work in the City of Fairfield is that, that there's four primary departments in the city that deal with homelessness. Homeless Services, which you currently know is what Don Labar oversees, is a, a huge function of that, but it is one piece of the puzzle, out of a four-piece puzzle at least. It is one piece of the puzzle. Housing is certainly a big part of that with CDBG grants. They work very closely with homeless services and the Police Department and ensuring that we have housing and preventative housing options for those that might lose their homes. And then Public Works, who has HART, who does all of the camp cleanup and other debris cleanup. It's not just camp cleanup, but it is a lot of debris cleanup throughout the city, and they do the shopping cart retrieval program. And then, of course, the Police Department, who has HIT, which is a homeless intervention team, and, and it is their primary function, but there are a lot of parts in the Police Department that deal with homelessness. Code enforcement is a big part of that with blight and nuisance and code violations on public or private property. Crime prevention is a big part of it. All of our police staff, all of our PSA lieutenants and sergeants and all of that, all play a huge part in, in preventing and reducing homelessness and the effects that they have on our community. And so right now, with it being under four roofs and four bosses, it is difficult to get all of us to work collectively the way that we should. Now, we all do work independently, independently of one another toward a common goal, but we also work, we work collectively and we work independently, both. And, and it's, it's inefficient, to, to just be completely honest. And I think we do want to give the best service to our community, and as evident by, by what was said today, and, and it's not about fixing something that's broken, because we are doing a great job. There's no question about that. We are, the, all of us communicate on a regular basis, and we are doing a good job, but we could do a better job, and we could be much more efficient and less wasteful with our resources, I think, if, if we were under one umbrella, and whatever that umbrella happens to be, whether it's housing, or the Police Department, or its own department, or whatever that turns out to be. So, so I just wanted to lay that foundation, that it is, for me, it's, that's more what it's about. And I'll give you a primary example. When I, when I got to Fairfield, we were talking about having a safe parking program, which is important to talk about and can be very successful and also can be an absolute nightmare for a city. And so the lieutenant that meets with Quality of Life, met with that task force, talked about it, ended up coming back to the Police Department and then pitched the idea, and I had tons of questions. I had a lot of research that I did on safe parking programs, and I looked at a lot of cities that were successful and some that were absolutely not successful, and cost those cities a lot of money. And so I had a lot of questions. I gave those back to the lieutenant. The lieutenant took them back to the Quality of Life Task Force. Those questions eventually got addressed, and we did get on the same page. It just wasn't very timely, and it would be so much better if we were all under the same roof, if a police officer and housing and homeless services and Public Works were all sitting next to each other and could say, hey, what about this? Well, that will work for housing, but it won't work for the Police Department, and here's why. But if we tweak it, it will work, right? And to be able to have that communication just like that is really effective. And to have shared goals that everyone is working toward continuously is also incredibly helpful. So I just think you'll get much more innovation and collaborative working relationships when everybody is under whatever that one house is, whatever that turns out to be. So what I, I'm going to show you here is a organizational chart. I was asked to put together what it would look like if it was in the Police Department. And so this is what I think it would look like. Now, this obviously could be changed, but this is what I think it could look like. If you look at that organizational chart, on the right-hand side, or what would be my right-hand side, the blue boxes, what are Community Engagement Division, that currently exists in the Police Department, Code Enforcement, Crime Prevention, PAL actually isn't under that division, but I would put that there because it makes most sense. So that division actually already exists. The other side of it, parts of it exist. So HIT exists in the Police Department, and our Police Social Services Coordinator, Mary Ann, is in the Police Department, and they're overseen by a sergeant. So the three blue boxes exist in the Police Department currently. The green boxes are what would come over from other city areas. So housing specialists, which would come from housing, that would understand all of those things that housing, that housing does that I don't understand, because I'm in the Police Department. And so that person would come over. And homeless services would come over to the Police Department, which would include the two staff that are there now, plus the four behavioral special, behavioral health specialists that have been authorized in the last budget cycle would come. And they would work with our current Police Services Coordinator, Mary Ann, to work hand-in-hand with our homeless intervention team, which they currently do now, at least Mary Ann does. And then HART would come over from Public Works, because HART and HIT work hand-in-hand right now on all camp cleanups. They're always together. All camp cleanups involve behavioral health services, because we offer all services before we do any kind of cleanup. It involves HART, and it involves the Police Department. All, we're all three together anyway. We just don't happen to be under the same roof. So the white boxes are things that would have to be added to the Police Department. It would be elevated to a captain-level position. The person that would oversee that could be a civilian equivalent of a captain. Doesn't have to be a sworn position. The, the, the only reason I say putting it under the Police Department would be effective is because I have sworn police officers. And so if you want to put it all under housing or all under its own department, that's great, but the police officers from HIT can't go change and work for or under a different department. They still have to stay in the Police Department. Now, it's not impossible. If you took that left side of that organizational chart and you wanted to plop that somewhere else, you could certainly do that. The one thing for the Police Department would be, my folks would serve kind of as a task force. We, we have, and, and Councilmember Tim, you understand how this works. Like currently, we have a detective that's on a Solano County Major Crimes Task Force with the DA's office. He serves there at the behest of the DA's office, but he still works for the Police Department. So if he has a use-of-force issue, if he has a citizen complaint, and there's a po bar issue or anything else, it still falls under the Police Department. And so they could work in a task force kind of capacity with another department, if that was what you decide to do. So let me just go over what I've envisioned as the responsibilities of this homeless services division, regardless of wherever you decide to put it. They would, they would do all case man, so all things homeless, if you will. One-stop-shop, community members, if they have complaints, it goes one place, not to, you know, potentially four different places. Same for you, if you have two by two, all of that goes, you know, to one area. So case management and service connection, which is working with housing, it's tenant-based housing, rental assistance, all of those kind of things, rapid rehousing, so temporary rapid housing shelter, all of the work we currently do with all of our shelter nonprofits, and all of those, family reunification. Education would fall under this area, which would be a liaison to residents, businesses, receive and address community complaints, educate community on homelessness, educate council and city staff on effects and needs, educate the county and political leaders on needs, data collection for appropriate decision-making and monthly report out. I think we all do collect data. We do it differently, and so we all probably report out differently on that, but it would be nice to have that be one effort. And then, of course, maintain the, and update the city website. Work with nonprofits to provide services. That would be one thing, which currently happens, job training, workforce training, food, basic needs, all of those kind of things that are currently happening. Enforcement, that falls under, under the Police Department now, and we would continue to do that. And, you know, there's things that HIT does that we're improving on now. We're, we're good at a lot of things, but we, we can be better, and we're currently working on those things. So we would continue that. Grant funding, coordinate city and county community services, public policy and legislation, which is currently taking place, developing innovative solutions based on best practices, and then, of course, all the stuff that HART and HIT does, camp and debris cleanup and, and all of that. So, so it would be everything that currently is taking place under four different departments. It would just be under the leadership of, of one person with a, a collective and collaborative vision for that one particular unit. So I'll turn that back over then to the City Manager.
Okay, now if we can pull up the other slide there, the next slide there that has the org chart. There we go. So we've talked a little bit about the why in housing services. We've, we've talked about the potential of placing it all under the Police Department. Another option that we've discussed was potentially creating a department of its own, that would be the homeless services department, and elevating that to its own department. This is just kind of a, a brief what it may look like. You would, you would bring in a Director of Homeless Services. Underneath that Director, you'd have potentially two areas. One would be, for lack of better terms, and we might come up with something that's better than this, human services, which deals with your homeless prevention. It deals with mental health, education, outreach, many of the things that are already being done with your homeless services division currently. The other side of that would be infrastructure. That's dealing with camps, cleanups, parking. We have different areas that you may want to designate as homeless parking areas for people that do want to sleep in their car. They, they, they don't want to go somewhere else. There's been ideas floated around by that, not saying that we would do that or not, but these are the types of things that they that we would do that or not. But these are the types of things that they'd be overseeing. Facilities and shelters, those types of things. So, you'd have the human touch side that's dealing with individuals and how to get those individuals help. And then, you have more of the infrastructure side, the things that are needed, the capital projects, those kinds of things. Placing that again under one roof. Now, there's dotted lines now going out to the Chief of Police and to the Director of Housing Services. Obviously, those two areas still exist. There needs to be some coordination, but this would be a department-level individual that is now coordinating with peers in the police department and in Housing Services. So, this again is another idea. There's some obvious costs to creating a new department. For a department head alone, you're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of an additional $300,000 per year. Now, that's salary plus benefits and those kinds of things, just for that. If you were to hire another division manager, and under this scenario, I don't know that you'd need another division manager, but maybe a supervisor, but an additional division manager, you're probably looking at the $250,000 range, just for that. So, there's some additional cost. Now, there's pros and cons to this. Obviously, there's pros and cons to each of those things. Some of the pros are, you are, I think, elevating the game of homeless services. If they have their own department, laser-focused on those kinds of programs, a department head-level individual, what we would look for is somebody who's very big into strategizing, the strategic side of leading a department, figuring out the strategy of how to move forward, how to continue to work with other groups. We have that going really well right now with our current Homeless Services Division. They do a very good job with outreach and those kinds of things. This would, we hope, take it even further. Add an additional strategic thinking mind to the team. So, you're kind of doubling the brain power, I think, is what we're talking about here. And again, the downside is cost. I mean, let's face it. It costs some money to do it this way. Now, as Chief Cantrell said, one of the things that, as we try to refine and create a more efficient organization to tackle these problems, one of the things that we always look at is, are there areas where we can eliminate the need for bridges? And so, when we talk about placing things under one department or consolidating things, we're trying to eliminate the opportunity for stuff not getting passed on from department to department or getting lost because we were unable to work as efficiently in that cross-functional side as we'd like to. And that happens a lot. We're always trying to refine our processes so that we're more proficient in that cross-functional work. But anytime you can eliminate the need to do that is good. And so, this helps do that. Obviously, putting under the police department maybe does it even more. I think there's a lot to discuss about the different options. Again, we haven't landed on any option. We've spitballed a lot. We've talked a lot. I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen. In the meantime, we have an organization in place that's running well. It's running on all cylinders. That's not going to change. We're not saying, stop everything that you're doing. Let's figure this out. And until then, we're just not, we're continuing to move forward. Our Homeless Services Division continues to do great work and will continue to do great work. And at some point, if we all can come together and find something that we're all comfortable with, we'll look at the opportunity to create more efficiencies. Create or tweak an organization so that we can do even more with our outreach and with the services that we're trying to provide. So, that's our presentation. I'm sure I've left out a lot. I've got David Gassway over here, who's been big on helping us to talk about a lot of these things as well. So, I will stand for questions or comments or whatever the council wants to do at this point in the discussion. But let me make, I'm sorry, I did want to make one other recommendation. This, there's a lot here to go over. And one of the things that, as a leadership team, we recognized is, we've received great feedback from the city council and great direction, I think, from the council as far as this as being one of your highest, if not highest, priority, and where you want this to go. We've also seen, even in the last three or four months, lots of changes. That's happening. This is fluid. And so, we think it would be a good idea if we could certainly have some discussion tonight, but then reconvene in a work session. And those work sessions are designed so that the council and some leadership members of the team that you want to bring in can sit down and have a more fluid, open discussion about ideas and exchanging ideas and talking about, you know, this could work here. We could engineer it this way. The desire is to marry up your goals, your objectives, your priorities with a structure that is engineered to meet those at the highest level, rather than just building something and then saying, okay, here's your priorities. Now tackle them. We would rather say, here's the priorities, tackle something, here's the priorities. Now, let's build something that is engineered to tackle it. And I think that would be done well if we could sit down and spend some time in a work session doing that. That would be our recommendation moving from here. So, there, I'll shut up and let you have it.
Counsel, discussion, comments, reactions? Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you for the presentation, both chief and city manager. It is a super-complex problem, as we all know. And we've tried some things, and that hasn't worked, and tried other things. And it's going to continue to change, especially now with people, you know, maybe being forced out of their homes because of their losing them over the pandemic. We'll see how that goes because the county has things in place to help that. I just wanted to say that I agree with you, Mr. City Manager, that we should have, that staff should put together maybe some other ideas about things can look at, and that we should sit down for more of a study session. When I had the deaths in my family and I was not here to talk last time when you all talked about things, I watched that tape, and I was kind of sad because everybody else here is more, usually more gentlemanly and ladylike than I am. But that night, it looked like tigers. It wasn't nice. I had people call me. And I think that it's best if we're in a more relaxed situation. And so, I would say that, for one, I'm only one of seven, that I would like us to sit down and look at best practices in other cities, what works. And we obviously can be unique. We are. I mean, we're leaders on everything. We had a HIT team and all that before anybody else did. One of our guys went to work with the governor. So, you know, we're ahead of all this. It's just, you know, all of us have great ideas, and all of us are really strong-willed. And I like that. But I just think it would be nicer if we could sit down a little more relaxed. And that's all. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, just to address what you just said, Councilwoman Moy. First of all, we were not trying to be disrespectful that night at all. We were stating our opinions, okay? Sometimes we state our opinions a little more stronger than others. So, I actually don't agree with you on that. I think we, you know, it came across probably a little bit angry, but, you know, sometimes at council meetings, that does happen. And this was not the first time. So, I just want to put that on the record. Second of all, I want to thank you, Mr. City Manager in chief, for your presentations. I appreciate it. You know, one thing, as far as Division of Homeless Services goes, and I've talked to the city manager about this. You know, right now, Councilwoman Pandora and I are on the two-by-two committee, and we are actually now, with the other cities, discussing forming a countywide homeless commission, what they actually have in Yolo County. And we're very serious about it. In fact, we did give the city manager bylaws the other day.
I've got those, reading through them.
Right. Yeah. And I appreciate that. So, I think the work that we're doing there with the other cities, which has really been unprecedented over the last, you know, as many years I've been on the council, is really important. I appreciate everyone's concerns here. I really do. I think right now, as you said, things are going to stay the way they are for now. And I agree, if we need to have a workshop, a discussion about, you know, more ideas, that's fine. I do kind of stand by what I had said earlier about it being in the city manager's office. I believe that is the right place for it. Now, will it be its own department someday? Maybe. It could grow into that. I know that's something that you've talked about in the past. But, you know, that's going to be up to the rest of the council and their own feelings. I'm just expressing my own feelings. I really do think that the commission that we are talking about forming countywide is going to be critical, not only working with the county board of supervisors, but also, you know, all the mental health workers in the county and the different workers in the city. This dialogue has gotten very strong over the last six months to a year. And, you know, I mean, that's really my feeling about where it should be. Now, people might disagree. Like I said, I do appreciate, the presentation was very good, and the chief's also. I agree. It was a very good presentation. And there are other options, I understand. I'm just looking at the option that I believe in right now. I think our division is doing a really good job, and I think right now to halt that at this point, which I know you don't want to do, I know you don't, would not be a good idea. The work we're doing with other nonprofits, you know, with other cities, the communication, like I said earlier, other electeds, has been, you know, really strong. So, you know, before we do anything, I think we really need to take a look at where that commission is going, okay? And where the other cities are going as far as communicating with us. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, for the first time, probably in 30 years, I think people have finally reached a knowledge of the gravity of the situation. Now, whether we have a department or whether we move it, we need to discuss it at a workshop, in a workshop that includes our community partners, mental health. It could be a day, it could be two days. I don't really care. But I think we finally come to the realization, it's could be millions of dollars. And just think back how much money we have spent over the last 30 years trying to piecemeal and put together. And we do our best because we didn't know. But I think now that this has been going on, and we can see, and you can read studies, you can look at a myriad of different things. But we, and I say this, and I say it with pride, that Fairfield is always bigger, better, brighter, faster. Hopefully, we're bigger, better, brighter, faster to a conclusion and not going downhill. But what I also heard tonight, which was very encouraging, is that the one-stop-shop, I don't want to have to have somebody say, well, you know, let me check with the Public Works Director, or the, you know, the Assistant Police Chief, or, I need people in that room that can make a decision, that their bosses, be it the city manager, chief police, public works director, fire chief, have confidence in that person, and they have the ability. Because here's your problem, and another problem's coming right through the door. We don't, and especially, and you find this in policing, in any service, is, we need to deal with this issue. And where you put the brightest people in the room that have the ability to make a decision, I don't, we've never done that before in this city. We've never done that before. Because it's like, oh, wait a minute. I got to ask the fire chief or I got to ask the police chief. So, this is extremely encouraging. And I give you kudos. But I also, and I'll shout out to John, Taxpayers Association, we are concerned about money, obviously. And I'm not going to say money is not an object, you know. It is. Vice Mayor Vicaro brought up with the two-by-two and the commission. And let's see where that goes. That's finally getting traction. And like we talked about earlier, I think everybody in the county is focused on this, from Solano County, from the mental health, to the board of supervisors. We've never, ever had that before. Never. So, we're not going to change anything. We'll still do what we're doing right now. Now, we can move forward. And whether it's a four-hour, eight-hour, two-day workshop, this is the biggest problem. This is what the council hears. This is what your neighbors talk about. This is what my wife and kids talk to me about, right? It's the homeless issue and the associated problems. Again, it's not all criminal. It's not all police department. A lot of it is mental health. We understand that. What the chief said is about being on a task force, they're still police officers. We are responsible for them. We need to acknowledge that fact. Fire Department, Stephen Conte, Fire Marshal, play such a big impact on how we work. We don't even know it a lot of times until it happens. And again, it's people thinking outside the box. So, yes, I agree with the vice mayor. I thank you, Mr. Chatwin, because, and Kat was right, you know, last meeting, you know, sometimes, you know, don't confuse politics and friendship. Sometimes things get a little heated.
You better not.
Calmer heads will prevail the next day. But chief, thank you. And like I said, it's so gratifying to myself and hopefully my colleagues.
It is.
That we're, I think we finally, it's like, folks, this is going to take a lot of time, and it's going to take some money, but we're going to do the best we can. So, anyway, that's my feeling on it. Well done, and a workshop, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments quickly? Councilwoman Bertone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. City Manager and Chief Cantrell, for your presentations. Appreciate it, much appreciate it, and well done. So, good is the enemy of great. I agree with that 100%. But I think that what we are now is great, and that we will become greater. I mean, it's like this phone right here. My cell phone, my iPhone, is about 12 years old. And my kids are always saying, oh, my goodness, why don't you get the newest model? Because this phone is built on a solid foundation of technology. Now, it may not have all of the bells and whistles that, you know, the newer phones have, but this one works. Tried and true. And therein lies my concern about the shakeup, about the reorganization. We have an organization right now that is built on a solid foundation of what? Of hard work, goodwill, know-how. Those are things we can't buy. You know, those are things that take time to cultivate. And we've taken the time. We've done the work. We've had the workshops. I mean, if we want to have another workshop, fine. I'll go to another workshop. But we have articulated our policy priority for this issue clearly. And over the years, we've come to the point to where we're actually, we're delivering. We're delivering. Someone at the Solano County Board of Supervisors meeting the other day recognized that on the record, and said Fairfield is the go-to spot on homelessness. Before you do any research, before you start Googling, before you start reading the news, call Fairfield because they got it. Because we've put in the work. And by the way, we happen to have a unicorn in the room. Her name is Don Labarre. And she's been a great, the most valuable asset, I think, in this organization when it comes to this issue. Put in the work. So, my concern is that, I mean, I agree with you that good is the enemy of great. I would consider us now great and going to get better. So, it greatly concerns me when we start talking about a big organizational shakeup when we just got it right. We're just getting it right. We're leading not only in Solano County, but regionally. I think that's fantastic. So, we really need to check ourselves, all of us, before we tweak something that has gained the kind of notoriety and more important efficiency. And at the end of the day, like Catherine said, Councilmember Moy said at the beginning of the meeting, where we're actually helping people. We're actually helping, because that's why we're here. And when we have that many children homeless in the county, I'd love to see us have conversations about that. That's what we're not getting right at this point. So, if we're going to spend our resources in homelessness and getting better, boom, there it is. But the structure is working. It's working. And to add to that, if we're going to layer on a half-million bucks or whatever in additional personnel, I'm going to have a really tough time justifying that. Because the first thing my constituents are going to know is, want to know is, wait a second. It's working. And now, you're going to change it as it's working, and it's going to cost us more money? That's going to be... That's going to be a problem for me, at this point. So, those are my comments. I, I think the organization has been built on solid ground, and I think that, how can I say this? I think that hypothetical projections give way to actual results. What we have now are actual results. And, you know, I know as a leader, your job, part of your job is always making the organization better, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your passion for doing that. I think that we should tread lightly right here, because we've got something that's working. And with the ingredients of goodwill, and know-how, and relationships, 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 those are, those are intangibles, is what the lawyer would call them, I guess. But, you know, they're, they're things that you just can't, you just can't buy, and we've got it right. So, I, I'm willing to do another workshop. I, I stand by my comments at my, at the last meeting. Sorry if I got a little heated, but you know me, I mean, I do that anyway, you know. But, but, but what, but, but what I will say in closing is just that, I, I would like us to keep what we have and build on that. That, that's what, I think it would be the most cost-efficient, the most time-efficient, and most importantly, the most service-driven model, so that we can continue to help people out here in these streets who need us to do it right. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentations and the options. You know, you, it sounds like you heard us, and you did, so thank you. I just wanted to, I agree, a work session would be ideal. I know that what we have, we got it, but we are also the city that people do look to. And as this regional committee becomes a commission, which I know we have not really explained, and I think this is why the work session would be so important, would be to explain why that commission is coming to fruition. What does it mean? What does it look like? Because it's, it's, it's for the, it's for the good of our, each of our cities. What impacts us impacts the soon, what impacts, you know, we, so we all have to look at it that way. And it is exciting, so, you know, if you've been following the Board of Supervisors, they are currently going through their ARPA funding allocations. And the last two meetings, pretty much every city on the regional committee, so ourselves, Vallejo, Suisun, and Vacaville, all called in in support of, and asking for funding for our Navigation Center plan. So just so you all know that this is, this is new, this was not here six months ago. So it is a very fluid situation, and I think it does call for us to take the time to sit down and discuss what does that look like, and what does that mean to our city and our community? Because I think there's going to be great stuff that's going to come from it, just like Rick was talking about. This two-by-two is the first time that, you know, we always talk about, bring in the county, let's, let's work with the county, everyone always points fingers, always works on silos. And I think this commission is going to allow us to work together and break down those silos, and bring in opportunities that we have never been able to achieve before. Because we, I don't know, it's, it's a different page. And we got it, we do got it. But we need to stay ahead of the game and continue to be innovative, and that means, let's see where this commission takes us. And so I appreciate the, the, the different ideas, but I'm also excited to see what else we can talk about and see where we can go with this, because our city deserves it, and we deserve to, our citizens deserve it. The people that we represent deserve the time that we're going to take to sit down and discuss this again, and that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just real quick, I want to give props to Councilwoman Panduro, because she did speak at the, at the Board of Supervisors today, representing our committee in Fairfield. And I believe Vice Mayor Sullivan spoke also from Vacaville, and he's a big part of our committee also. And Felicia from Vallejo also spoke, I believe. So really, this has been a, a real effort countywide, so thank you, Doris, for doing that.
Final comment, Madam? Go ahead, please, Councilwoman.
Yeah, so, just to second what Councilwoman Panduro said, I didn't say this probably strongly, or specific enough, I think, it wasn't specific enough. And I think the City Manager may have brought this up, but I think that, yes, we do owe the people in this town, our bosses. We do owe the people who live on our streets. We do owe more than 1,000 children. We do owe them that time. That's what we're supposed to be here for. And if somebody wants to tussle, I'm always good for that. I'm sorry I missed it then. But I just was a little bit surprised, but I'm glad everybody stands by it. That means you have conviction, and I like that, because I have it too. So, I do, would love to bring in the people from the county, the experts, so, you know, we can all talk there about it. And I'd like to say that in top of that, we've got to make sure that we're talking about drug addiction too. I know we're in here, I saw that, except for one area that the chief put together. But those two things together, like 95% of the people in San Francisco right now, they've looked at them, it's drug addiction and mental illness. So, the people on the streets, many of them are that, or sometimes running from the law, sometimes they've had a bad time. So, I just know all that from working with it, and I continue to do so. But I really like the idea, and I appreciate what, especially what Councilwoman Panduro said, so thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. So, Mr. City Manager, I think the direction is clear, we want to schedule a workshop as soon as we can. And get all of us involved. And I'm glad we did this tonight in open session, so the community has a sense of what we're facing and how we're going to try to solve the problem. The problem does have a solution, we just have to get to it. So, thank you very much. And can we go with public comments now? Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Yes. Jean Ahu wanted to speak on the homeless situation. Oh, and I'm, I need to read the process for public comments, sorry, if you can just hold on a moment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card, if you haven't done so already. When joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature, or press nine on your phone to request to speak. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item, and I'll be using my timer. Thank you. So go ahead, sir.
Jean Ahu, Director for Mission-Samaa Programs. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to come in and say, hey, look, I've been doing this homeless thing here for 25 years, I've lived in this community for 60 years. You know, right now, we've got people in this city council that don't take pictures with shovels, but they got their hands dirty. They're actually doing stuff to change the homelessness here. You know, Don Labarre's been a big part of what we've done for a long time. And Mr. City Manager, you know, since you've come on, and you've got her back, we're in a place right now that we've never been in this community, with the homelessness. And I think to change it when we're at the top of the pole right now, but there's a little more climbing we've got to do, is a big mistake, man, and I hope the City Council shares that with you, that, you know, we need to look, hey, we're in a good place right now, we need to keep going, not, not stop. And like I said, you know, Don Labarre, she's good at what she does, she's great at what she does, she's got you, as long as you've got her back, she can keep going. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker on the same item is Debbie Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I, can I take this off? I have been around a long time, and I, I know most of you, and some of you touched on a couple of things I wanted to mention, that it's really about collaboration. You know, it's really about partnerships, community, relationships, and that's something that we've all worked hard on in this city for a long time. I'm, I sent you all an email on September 1st, prior to the last meeting, and I'm not going to read that again, because it's really long, but it's important to just know that what we have now is that true collaboration. So even though the Hart team and the Hit team are in separate organizations than the Homeless Services team, they work together so well. And so hearing that, somebody mentioned that it's ineffective or inefficient, is just not true. I have called them numerous times. My business is in a part of Fairfield that's frequented by homeless on Sunset between East Tabor and East Travis, and we have to call every couple of weeks. And it's been working so well. And also, as a member of the Fairfield-Suisun Chamber of Commerce, we discuss this often, both in board meetings and just with the chamber membership, about the fact that the businesses are feeling supported. So I really like the fact that you're discussing having a workshop, and would really encourage you to invite the community to that as well, especially the stakeholders that work with homeless, the providers that are here, the faith community, healthcare, the Hit team, I mean, who, has anyone asked the current homeless services providers for their opinion, or their feedback on this whole thing? I don't know. Or the homeless division staff, or the Hit team and the Hart team that are actually out there in the weeds, doing the work. So that would be important too, to hear from them. So, thank you all, and thank you for the presentation and the options, and I'm excited to see what's going to happen. Thanks.
Our next speaker on the same topic is Anna Patero.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to thank the City Manager for his presentation. As policymakers, I'd like for you to consider a couple of things that I heard in the presentation. In order to change something, I think it's important to establish that there's a need for change. In the, in the City Manager's presentation, he didn't establish a significant enough need that warrants spending $500,000 on two positions, when in his own presentation, he said, "This is working." And as many of you have, have addressed, it is working, so why would we change it? And so it seems as though, this is an office that says, "Here's what I want to do, I want to move it to someplace else," but he's now, he's not established a significant need. So what I'd like to talk about here is where we're helping with the, with the houseless. I really love the idea of a commission, because when you have a commission, you work more closely with the members of the community who can actually help and do something, you work with people on the ground. As a person who's working on the ground, having adopted a couple of streets, we work at Ledgewood Creek, and there are a couple of homeless, a few homeless, houseless people who live there, they live there. And when you move houseless people around, all we're doing is moving them from one room to the next, you're not doing anything with them. But they need some help, and not all of them are on drugs, and if they're on drugs, there's a reason why they're on drugs. They just don't, people don't, "I'm just going to go and have drugs and do drugs," and go hang out underneath Ledgewood Creek. At Ledgewood Creek, by the way, I don't know what the Hart team's doing, what the Hit team's doing, we're cleaning it up. Mr. Vaccaro, you said, "Thank you to the teachers at Fairfield, all the teachers, what they're doing." Mr. Holsendorf, teaches at Fairfield High School. Not only does he teach at Fairfield High School, he brings students from Vacaville, from Fairfield, all over, to help clean up Ledgewood Creek. They know how to take care of their community. What happens, though, is that we come back every week, and it's there, the trash is there. So while you're moving houseless people around, you're leaving the trash. What we need for that, for that $500,000 is to hire more people at Public Works. There are four people at Public Works to help with the Adopt the Street program. Karen Reese needs some help. That's where we need, we need the real help. We've asked before, which is the reason why I was here, to put a dumpster at Ledgewood Creek, because they are cleaning it up, they just need some place to put it, right? And so when there's no place to put it, that's, that, that becomes a problem. I don't think we should change the situation, the, the structure as it is now, they just need more help. I think the commission's a great idea, Don Labarre's doing a wonderful job, and we are working our butts off to clean our environment, because that's so important.
And would you conclude, please?
Yes. What we need is for you to help us. Use us, but don't abuse us, because we're out there cleaning. Don't change the structure, don't spend $500,000 on something that isn't needed. Thank you. That's our money.
Thank you. Our next speaker on regular public comment, Jeff Trager.
Mr. Mayor, as Jeff comes up, can I just ask the City Manager quickly?
Please, go ahead.
In terms of the workshop, is that going to be open to the public?
Yes, workshops are, are open to the public, yeah.
Okay, so, there you go, Debbie.
And just to follow up with our last speaker, when we have a cleanup, do they leave the trash, sir? Spencer City Manager?
Yeah, I think the trash is left in, in bags and then picked up. I'm, I'm looking for my, there's Paul over there. So they are left in bags, in a, in a piled area, and then the Public Works folks come out and pick those up.
So they don't leave the trash, so it can't be reopened? Is that, is that what we're saying?
Well, if that's happening, I'd like to know about it, but no, that's not what should happen. Once the trash is piled, we're notified that it's there, correct? And we're out there to pick it up. Do you want to elaborate?
Thank you.
Yeah, I can elaborate a little bit. So the specific location that I think we're talking about here is Ledgewood Creek, near the auto, on Autumn Mall Parkway. So, yeah, a large cleanup effort happens with, with our volunteer group, and it's on our regular route for our Hart team to pick up, and I think it's typically Monday mornings, excuse me, that they come pick it up. And, and so usually the work happens during the weekend, or right before the weekend, and our teams don't work on the weekend typically, and so they pick it up first, early, early Monday morning. And generally speaking, it's, it's kept intact, and there may have been times where, you know, people have, have gone through it. But if that happens, then our folks clean that up as well.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to follow up with what, what Miss Anna said, because I don't want the trash sitting around that they have worked so hard to pick up, and people coming back and doing, I understand, you know, being the weekend, so, thank you.
Paul Hudson, Toddison, please.
When is the next Hart cleanup out there? Do you know? I'm not trying to gotcha, but...
Yeah, a scheduled one, like a large scheduled one. I, I don't know the date off the top of my head, I know that they work closely with, with PD and with Caltrans on the large cleanup. Some, one of the challenges there, in that specific location, are the area where the homeless are residing, is in Caltrans right-of-way. And so the city, that's out of the city's jurisdiction, and so we need to coordinate that with Caltrans and with CHP, and so it's a much larger effort than just within city right-of-way or city limits. We can take care of that with just city staff.
And, and to pick up the trash, you don't have to mark a camp, you can, we don't have to give any notice if we're going to go clean up things, right?
If it's just debris, and it's not an established camp, then, then Hart can pick that up. If it's an established camp, then we work with Hit.
Do we need to contact Caltrans if we're cleaning up trash in our city?
Well, not if, if it's within the city limits. The area that we're talking about specifically, where, you know, where the camps are, is in within Caltrans right-of-way, under the highway.
But, but the trash, Hart could clean up, we don't have to notice Caltrans or anything like that to clean that up? Thank you.
Within Caltrans right-of-way, yes, we do. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't, I misunderstood.
So we have to notice Caltrans to clean up trash?
If it's within Caltrans right-of-way, even if it's within city limits, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have several, and then I'll have to check if there are any on Zoom. Our next speaker is Cameron Holsendorf.
Madam Clerk, did Jeff Trager speak?
I'm sorry?
Did Jeff Trager speak?
Oh, I believe he left.
Oh.
Yeah.
Because he was called up, but he didn't speak, okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
All good. Good evening. First, I know I do a whole little spiel, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vaccaro, City Council, city staff, and everybody in attendance today in the chamber here. My name is Cam, and that is Cam with a K. Thank you for listening. First off, with the trash situation, we're not just talking about Ledgewood Creek. I have multiple videos after Hart team has made a cleanup of an encampment and have left trash there. Myself, I have done solo cleanups on those sites that you have directed to go ahead and clean up, and there's still a whole bunch of trash there, still. So that was on me, I handled that. But I want to go ahead and applaud you, City Council, because you guys exhibit this phrase, "Fairfield works together." Fairfield works together, works through our communal issues together, and we, as we unify on one goal, we are Fairfield Strong. Here's some accomplishments you guys have done with the houses department in the branch right there. Mission Samoa has new houses. City Church has a mini programs to help reintegrate, reintegrate our houses community back to our city. The Hart team has many upgrades, and you have sparked so many community members to step up. So why backtrack? Why reset when needed, when it's not needed? Why break down our foundation? Why flip up the chessboard before we got the checkmate on this endeavor working with our houseless community in Fairfield? If you move the, move this to the police, you already, you know the police already have a specific focus, crime and prevention. Police wear too many hats already. The responsibility of what we don't want to deal with can't always fall on the police. The Housing Authority has a specific focus to house community members and find housing for all. None of these organizations focus on assisting houseless folk with mental health and reintegrating them back into society. Housing is not only service that houseless folk need. They need someone to talk to, not an enforcer. They need necessities. They need a safe place to lay their heads down for shelter or until shelter comes or housing. They need a true dedicated helping hand. If we change the department, we'll waste taxpayers' money, and we'll derail the immense progress you have already made and have, have the communities' members going to deal with. Remember just a year ago when we had these chambers full, where the community members vehemently were against the Hit team and their practices? At least, let's reconsider the proposal to the next fiscal year to recuperate funds that we've lost during the pandemic. And this is my last question. Can we include community members in these workshops? I tell you, there are many, many community city members willing to help volunteer in the houseless services for free.
Would you conclude, please?
No money, no recognition, I got you. All right, no money, no recognition, just straight service. Let's invest in Fairfield, and the Fairfield potential will truly shine. We, the people of Fairfield, stand ready to assist you in working with our houses community. We are Fairfield Strong.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, our next speaker is Kelsey Spencer, to be followed by Carrie Rader.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name's Kelsey Spencer, and I'm here on behalf of Colleen Baruman, Executive Director at Vacaville Solano Services Corporation. Some of you may also know us as Opportunity House Homeless Shelter in Vacaville. Colleen had a prior commitment and couldn't be here tonight, but asked that I share her concerns about the proposed realignment that would affect the city's homeless services team. Colleen has been the Chair of Housing for Solano, the local continuum of care, for the past three years, and has worked closely with the homeless services manager and her team to ensure that our homeless neighbors are advocated for and properly served. Having the homeless services manager report directly to the city manager and having quick access to them has been critical to making important progress with homeless advocacy while also serving the needs of the greater community. The 2017 and 2019 point in time counts have indicated that our community is experiencing higher numbers of homelessness than ever before. Moving the homeless services team at the peak of our homelessness crisis could impact the momentum that the continuum of care and Fairfield's homeless services team have built over the past decade. Colleen asked the council to consider not tampering with a system that has been working beautifully as is, and wonders if the council or city manager have considered what the homeless, the Fairfield's homeless services manager feels about these potential changes that we're all talking about and the impact it could make on existing progress. It's Colleen's hope that the council will not approve this change and instead keep the homeless services team in their current capacity with a direct line to the city manager. Colleen and I both thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carrie, is it Carrie or Carrie?
Carrie.
Carrie, I'm sorry, Rader. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts tonight. I was impressed, Mr. City Manager, that you heard what we said last month and that you came up with some positive ideas and changes. I've worked with Dawn Labarre since 2009. I was staffed to the JPA. At that time, our budget was about $2 million a year. The JPA budget is now up to $21 million, and that's thanks to Dawn and the executive team on the JPA. They've been the motivating force to make all these changes and to bring the money in, and not only bring the money in, but make sure that it's spent properly, because the reporting is such a big part of that. I'm a huge proponent of the left hand knowing what the right hand is doing in Solana County in Fairfield, and that's what Chief Cantrell was talking about. We need everybody to be informed. We lack coordination, and we're working on that coordination through Resource Connect Solano, and I have gone to Dawn Labarre and said, "You need to make sure that Mission Samoa is at the table. We know what City Church is doing and can be so on and so how." I suck at this, this public speaking thing. Thank you. So really, I don't want to lose Dawn's influence in what we've been doing. The providers have a very difficult job. We are working with each other, and we're working against each other because we're competing for grants. And Dawn has relationships that we don't want to lose. We've invested her time, and she, we don't want to lose the momentum that, that you all have been talking about. Dawn's relationships with the churches, with the government, with the providers, with the for-profit businesses and the nonprofit businesses is pretty incredible. And so as a service provider in the community, I just want to emphasize that we don't want to lose her expertise. Thank you for your time.
You.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ms. McDougal. Is it Jean?
Good evening, council. I just wanted to start off by thanking all of you for your work. I may disagree with you a lot, but I know that everyone's heart is in the right place, and I just love this city, and I love the work that you're doing. Thank you so much. I also want to thank the person who did the presentation on breast cancer, a breast cancer survivor. I started the breast cancer support group at Travis Air Force Base. I started the prostate cancer support group at Travis Air Force Base, and I just want to thank you. Thanks all the survivors, and thank you all so much. I kind of feel like I'm at, one time I remember when I was in college, I was invited to a party, and it was in this fancy professor's house and, and so forth, and I ended up at the wrong place, and I had a great time. So I was here actually to talk about something else, and the, the talk about homelessness really touched my heart. But I, I just, what I have to say is just really, really, really brief, and that is that this pandemic is not over, and I just really want to encourage people to wear your mask and to take this pandemic seriously. A lot of our, I have, in my household, we have four school-aged children, and several of the children in their various classrooms have tested positive, which means that even though our public health director has said that it's caused by small group gatherings, this, this virus has been brought into the household from somewhere else, and the kids have brought it to school. And I just really, really beg you, we lost a great man in General Powell, who I met, part of the military, and he had multiple myeloma, which suppressed his immune system. I'm in the beginning stages of a multiple myeloma. I'm at the M-gas, N-gas stage right now, and I just beg you, on behalf of my children, your children, neighbors and everybody, wear the darn mask. It's not too much to ask, but get the vaccine. We have all of these things available to us in this wonderful country. We lived in Turkey for six years. We lived in Portugal for years. We lived in Germany. And we live in California. This is a wonderful state. This is a wonderful county, a wonderful city. Get the damn vaccine. Please wear the mask, and thank you again for your wonderful work. Good evening.
God bless you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll be praying for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my appreciation for reminding me. I took my mask off for the presentation. We do have an employee requirement to wear the mask, and I neglected to put it on, so thanks for reminding me there.
And also, I wanted to ask Brian in the back room if there's anyone on Zoom waiting to speak on public comment.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to go ahead and give the, our participants a reminder that feel free to use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to submit a public comment at this time. I'll give you just a couple more seconds here. And it looks like there are no raised hands, so no public comments via Zoom at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Madam Clerk, we will convene the Housing Authority, please.
Yes, the holding of a joint meeting of the city council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting, and I do need to take role. Commissioner Bertoni?
Here.
Commissioner Moy?
Here.
Commissioner Panduro?
Here.
Commissioner Tim?
Here.
Commissioner Tonason?
Here.
Vice Chair Vaccaro?
Here.
And Chairman Price. Thank you. And the first item is Housing Authority Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
So moved.
Second?
Since everyone's here, I don't have to take role again. The next item is Housing Authority Public Hearings.
We got a vote.
We got a vote, though.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
We have to vote. All in favor?
All in favor?
Thank you. And the next item, item six, Housing Authority Public Hearings. Public Hearing and Resolution, H.A. 2021-13 of the Fairfield Housing Authority, approving the Fairfield Housing Authority Administrative Plan and Public Housing Agency Five-Year Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2026. And our presenter is Latan Jones, Director of Housing Services.
Good evening, Commissioners. Latan Jones, Director of Housing Services. We're opening the public hearing for the five-year PHA Annual Plan for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. On August 8th, we posted a notice for the plan in the Daily Republic. We exceeded the program requirement in that the notice was published 72 days in advance of the public hearing rather than the required 45 days. Documents were placed in City Hall, the Housing Authority, Fairfield Library, and City Clerk's Office. This year, we are updating the five-year annual plan for the years 2021 through 2026. As a reminder, the five-year annual plan describes the public housing authority's policies, programs, operations, and strategies to meet local housing needs. The five-year plan forecasts goals for five years, and each year thereafter, the PHA produces an annual plan that reports on the PHA accomplishments as projected in the meeting the goals and plans described in the five-year plan. Any new policies and PHA proposals to, that the PHA proposes to implement would actually be included in an annual plan. The new five-year plan also provides and updates on the goals indicated in the previous five-year plan. The 2015 through 2020 goals were increase voucher lease-up, sustain high-performance status, update the HCV administrative plan, update HCV preferences to include additional points aimed at addressing displacement due to government actions, and separating the HCV waitlist and the project-based waitlist. Overall, all the goals in the previous five-year plans, with the exception of one, were accomplished. The one that was not accomplished was obtaining and sustaining high-performance status regarding HUD's CBAP scoring criteria. We are considered a standard performer with a current CBAP score of 70%. However, we are including this goal in our new plan and are developing a strategy to move toward high-performance status over the next five-year period. We are also in the interview stage of our recruitment to obtain a manager for the Housing Authority that will help us to implement and realize some of the strategies toward high-performance status. The new goals for the proposed five-year include increase the inventory of affordable housing units. In this, in the Housing Authority, we have the ability to provide project-based vouchers. Now, the difference between a project-based voucher and a tenant-based voucher is, and simply, the project-based voucher is with the unit, whereas a tenant-based voucher is actually with the actual resident or the client. In that program, by us actually providing project-based vouchers, we are increasing housing opportunities. Secondly, as I indicated, we have placed the goal to meet high-performance status with regard to our CBAP scoring. Now, the CBAP assessment analyzes Housing Authority performance in areas such as how we select applicants from the waitlist, how we determine reasonable rent, correct calculation of the rents, utilization of the vouchers, et cetera. Overall, the assessment includes about 14 different areas in which a Housing Authority is actually assessed. So what we will do is make sure that we will improve the efficiency in all of these areas. We will train staff, we'll create quality control mechanisms to increase accuracy, and ensure that the Housing Authority is appropriately staffed. The third goal is provide an improved living environment. The PHA will pursue methods to proactively market the HCV program to prospective landlords, property management companies, and realtors. In the HCV program, we require that properties meet habitability standards and do not employ discriminatory practices that would end up discriminating against protected classes. So the more we are able to actually increase the actual Housing Authority program and spread that, the more we're able to make sure that the housing is actually going to be maintained at a particular standard, which would be habitable to residents. The fourth goal is to encourage self-sufficiency. Apologize for, if I can have you go back to the last slide, please? Thank you. This Housing Authority does not have a family self-sufficiency program currently. However, we have entered into an MOU with the county by which we can receive self-sufficiency services as well as collaborate with other housing authorities in order to be able to provide services for our Fairfield residents. The fifth goal is to increase assisted housing choices. Periodically, HUD puts out information about new ways Housing Authorities can issue and apply for additional vouchers to house its residents. For example, HUD issued the VAS voucher program, and that was a program that allowed us to be able to provide vouchers for veterans that were actually participating in the VAS program. HUD also put out emergency vouchers that allowed us to be able to have vouchers for, in order to be able to house people throughout the pandemic. And so there are a number of different programs that actually HUD will put out, and we want to make sure that we are taking advantage of those programs, but more importantly, getting that information out to the residents so that they would be aware that these programs exist and be able to take advantage of some of these different opportunities. Six, we want to ensure equal opportunity and affirmatively further fair housing. We will work with our partners, the Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California, Project Sentinel Legal Services of Northern California, to take affirmative measures to ensure that access to assisted housing is provided regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, disability, sexual orientation, and the other protected classes. Seven, we will increase customer service. We will make sure that we're getting information out to our residents. We will also make sure that we improve upon our current operating system, our software that we're working on, because it's about 10 years behind in terms of its efficiency. So we're going to make, be making modifications to that as well. And then currently, we, the whole city of Fairfield is involved in customer service classes and courses and training so that we can all improve our abilities to provide good customer service, and so we will continue that effort with the Housing Authority. And then finally, eight, we will improve the delivery of housing through cost-effective office management and operational efficiencies, and I believe that one speaks for itself. The Housing Authority is also, in this five-year plan, also adding local preferences to its tenant-based Section 8 waitlist. All the applicants, all the applicants will continue to be placed on the waitlist based upon the date All the applicants will continue to be placed on the waitlist based upon the date and time that their applications were received, but others meeting any number of these preferences will be ranked at a higher placement on the waitlist in accordance with preferences that we have established. All of these preferences were taking into consideration the needs assessment that was done for the city of Fairfield as well as other priorities that the city has. And I will just going to pull out one or two just for, I won't go through all of them in order to be able to save time. However, the second priority here, a preference, is families who participate in the city of Fairfield Tenet-Based Rental Assistance Program. Now, that program is not funded with Section 8 financing. That program is actually funded with home financing, but through that program, we actually provide rental assistance to individuals that are either homeless or at risk of homelessness, working very closely with the Hitt team in order to try to provide housing for those that are homeless or houseless. And so with that particular program, it's a temporary program. You have 24 months by which you can actually be on this program and obtain assistance. So what we wanted to do is make sure that there's a preference so that as that 24-month period ends, those people are not put off if they have not become self-sufficient throughout that timeframe, they are not going to now become homeless again because they no longer have the assistance. So this preference allows us to be able to place them at a higher ranking on the Housing Choice Voucher Program so that they can obtain a voucher and obtain permanent housing, because that is the goal. We want to make sure that people are going to be housed and not necessarily exacerbate the homeless situation that we have. And then the other one I will also point out is that families whose head of household, co-head of household, or spouse is elderly or disabled, for that particular area, based upon the needs assessment, about 12.2% of the Fairfield population are elderly. Within that particular class, about 26% of which have incomes that are 50% or below the area median income, which mean those individuals are at poverty level. And so in that particular category there, about 78% to 80% of those households are actually paying more than 30% to 50% of their income toward housing. So we want to make sure that we are providing a preference so that that particular, those that are elderly or disabled, are going to have opportunities for housing. So essentially, all of these particular areas here, these preferences, will allow people to be able to rise to the top of the list that were those individuals that have been identified in the needs assessment as needing additional help and/or resources. Similarly, we, with the project-based voucher program, in the last five-year plan, we did indicate that we would separate those two lists, the tenant-based voucher program and the project-based voucher program. Here, we're taking another step in that we will actually establish separate waitlists for each of the different programs that are receiving project-based vouchers. In Fairfield, we have about six projects that are at varying stages within the project-based voucher program, three of which are actually operational and are in the lease phase right now. These three programs are Sunset Creek, Laurel Gardens, and Gateway Village. And so what we have done is, based upon the actual funding requirements that most of these projects have, we have developed preferences that align with those so that we'll be able to more efficiently navigate through the waitlist and be able to make sure that people are going to be able to take advantage of the housing opportunities. With that, I will end my presentation, and I'm available if any of you have questions.
Comments or questions for Latan? Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Entertained a motion. Oh, we have a public hearing. Anyone choosing to speak on this item? Seeing done, entertain a motion then to approve resolution.
You need to open the public hearing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Did you open the public hearing?
Yes. Don't have any request to speak cards, right?
I think, Mr. Mayor, can you just formally open the hearing, ask for comments, and then close the public hearing?
Open the public hearing.
Okay. I do not have any speaker cards. Brian, do you have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Madam Clerk, there are no speakers wishing to speak on Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
So entertain a motion then to approve HA 2021-13. Motion to approve. Okay. Close the public hearing. Now entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Bertoni, seconded by Councilwoman Boya. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Reconvene the meeting of the City Council and the consent calendar, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can we ask if anyone wants to speak on any of the items that would indicate that they want to pull it?
I have no speaker cards. Brian, do you have anyone that wants to speak on the consent calendar on Zoom?
No speakers on Zoom at this time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 13, New Business. Minute Action, Approving the Mayor's Appointment to the Planning Commission. Dawn McDonald.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, I have business.
Tim?
Yes, I have business with Mr. McDonald. I'm going to have to.
Are you recusing yourself? Thank you.
So someone needs to make a motion to approve the appointment. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dawn, thank you back. Good to have you back. Thank you. There is no other business.
Oh, no, I need to swear amen. Okay. If you can just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dawn McDonald?
I, Dawn McDonald.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. I do need you to sign the oath. And I have a certificate for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank all of you. Appreciate it.
And now.
And I have a certificate for you and a city pin. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
We are now adjourned until our next meeting on Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you very much. Good night.